Joey, you missed a fun trip. And we were back in town.
I was gonna go, but I just... I get it.
We'll go again. Come on, get in.
I'm gonna sit right at the center. Oh, no, I can get another chair. I'll go get another chair.
Here, there's two here. There's two here people can sit at off the bench. Could I just stand anyways?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hello. I would say you have received a call from the O.T.F. or the Department of Energy. All welcome as a member of the state or as a member of the community.
Yes.
Okay, I should definitely be based on agenda, your name on the table. I'd be next. I would like you to have the planning and building position. You have the wonderful, we have the president. They're encouraging something substantial, something very... So, I'm guessing you have a hard functional planning and building position. Hey, probably want to send this to the committee. The comments made, you can't ask him regarding whether or not he sent the position on the workplace on any twenty minutes. That's correct. Okay, um, I see you have a standard. I'm sure it happens over the phone, I mean, right now. Where if you use this or type of position, they actually have to pass, they're thinking of why you basically keep going with their application. I don't really know what is the way into that. Because by sending those letters, they're asking for consideration. Does it... I suppose, Larry, can you give a little hope to this, because I had trouble here. Well, I was just saying that I was assuming you don't need a separate application to keep us alive even though it's been over twelve months. Um, just one side of the case is, the letter does mention that the position will be treated as a subposition in the letter, uh, for the year. So, it's three validation issues. My understanding from that is from E.O.R. office, the person that ran after the fact, that they are not, uh, proceeding in time of their position to validate will be treated as they're not, uh, maybe a failure to issue that, uh, that is coming up as part of the subposition. Or are there any questions about that? That I may or may not be able to answer on my application. I guess that would be a question.
Jen, um, I'm Judy F. Fuller. We haven't personally met or met the person yet, and I'm new to council as of this year. Um, I did attend meetings over the last few years regarding Jimmy Cathy's situation. And I don't know if it'd be of any help to both of them, one or both of them. But there are some old city meeting minutes from August of seventy-eight that actually answers questions they haven't been answered in the last year.
Right, August eighth, what year?
Sorry, August of seventy-eight, nineteen seventy-eight.
Oh, okay. Well, I think it's okay for it to say that he has, uh, but he said he was going to present, uh, he had a subposition application for a, for a present application where they say, hey, you made this last time, you said that you wanted to recuse it, you said you approved our stuff, it's been a long time. He's worried you only have the full content of it. You have planning and building position, and that's their job, like, just, they just attract that with the whole policy area, with the, they offer recommendations, and then you just act up to this thing from meeting, and that will be decided with content. Are there any other questions about that? Okay, so, reminder, if you're working any application, let's try to be helpful. I'm sure you are, you're getting any complaints, that's good, you are probably know that, like, probably a total. You can put in what people have to say to you about the application, that you should not conduct it with people, you should not conduct it with other non-tribal groups. And you should let people know, they want, don't want to use, um, you know, the verdict or whatever, that you have, and the way of being fair, right, um, to everybody, why would I hold up, and, um, equal protection, we can't discuss that, people tired of being on a duty to have, when you feel, you mean. So, for example, someone from one county, and I say you have to shut down, and I can't talk, and it's probably stupid thing. But if they do talk, you got it, you're an agent, you need to let them know, I can't discuss with you, and so, and I mean, it's a senior, if they're hearing. So, that's when I discussed it, for the twenty-one people. So, that's just a reminder, does, does the jury have, uh, one, or if you need more making applications, all the laws that you saw, like, having just, like, something, you would want to just exciting something outside the courtroom, for example, um, it's not a legitimate way of having, like, you know, really does have extra protection, you try to put all that, or date on that, um, you have any discussion, that, you know, dinner party, or, you, or, whatever, wait, discuss it, and we just even remain about it, or if, you know, if you get it, goes up on the schedule. Want to spell that? Okay. Okay. Um, Wendy, are you, uh, ready, actually, do you have a question, right? Or?
If everyone's ready.
Okay, so, we are now, this problem, as of the form, yeah, I think you have to need to, um, make the scene, like, certain, the fact of planning and building position, uh, please ask the type of action item, I think it's, in this, through, better be, for a person to, uh, set up a hearing, so. Okay, so, is the city council, since it's back, does planning and building position take up?
Yes, yes, and that's for you guys.
Well, I think it's just what you guys do, that city has a planning and building position, considering they're providing to council, right?
Yes.
Okay. So, uh... You were talking to me to make the decision, since you have, since the draft, you've been, since the draft, the city has, has, uh, first, I heard, is that it's a building position? Okay, you had some discussion, that, like, you can't hear it, or, or...
I think we both agree, right? We're all agreeing.
Okay, but I just want to make sure, whatever you're getting, okay, so, should I move on to the next issue?
Yes.
Okay, so, the next issue has to do with any draft, uh, contract building services, like, if I, they pop down, you use this. And there was a link within there that I found those people, and it appeared, it's a very complicated issue, I'll try to explain it, but I can't. It appeared that even though the city, the E.T., like, I'm in building official, or St. John County, official, you, in Cheltenham, the building code, and, like, whether you should building permit, which, of course, even, you would necessarily be an office, but it would be building professional, uh, weather, you should building permit. Um... I mean, it does have to be an accident covered by insurance, since it's a professional, professional position. And, from the language within there, maybe, or, that it was not covered by insurance, basically, it's been for many years, uh, made by, for, the, 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 in contract, they file, oh, you, there's like, a fair judgment, the city, that the buyer, or, the county, is the building business person, and, in many situations, if the city agrees with that, uh, you are contracting yourself as insurance covering fee. So, I propose that, since, since, still, I have some other conversation about this fight, now, it will email the buyer, um, I suppose, that, since, since, and it's justified in county, and it's justified by the way it's made, that if, you have to get to, uh, making, to need this, to need for it. So, as an example, I'm on a buyer's, on a building permit, building a, for, of it, for, and, being properly built, no inspection was done, I wasn't finalized, whatever, I said, you'll find, uh, the, the, um, in the situation where, now, you could need someone in the building permit, maybe rent, and property, and special, and, and, uh, they might, in line of, in the city, they have insurance coverage, for, you said, say, you would want a contract out of it, you want, I, to cover that. So, my, if you have the, the, like, you said, this, on track, what you're saying, is that you will need one piece of the, you will pay for a insurance that you, uh, the county, you know, um... I propose that the city covers its own actions, that the county covers its own actions. So, if the county, providing the initial, make the decision to, you know, rent the building permit, and, you know, get property, or, doesn't, question, here, that was, that was, that, we, and, the, I knew the, the county would look to the insurance company, by, by, and, the, the, you know, renting, building permit, for example, without, um, having the building, the city will get it, and, things back, how it happened, and then it came to city getting to, from city answer around this place, county, so, what I suppose, very common, a lot of these things, about no contract, was, you cover your actions, cover your actions, and that way, um, nobody contracts, now, for me. Well, the county's not there agreeing to that, and, the, that, city, and, all the other cities, they contract with, and, I never found the, everyone else, doing it, you really told me, or, you know. So, I've been, I've been, I've been, I've been asked, I, 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 my friend, only, because I found out, of the, and, right, but, that he was watching my bus on the, too. Right, we'll be, so, I called, I friend said, hey, it's totally clear, they force it, you know, you, you're ready, and I also, and I have a, that's the case, I thought it was correctly, I have asked, I'm trying to, tell me, if, if, right, it's, it's, it's me, very well, now, it's like, there, what I talked, like, to me, and, my question, so, then, go ahead.
No, I'm just saying, I agree with you, I read it as well.
What's that?
Go, go ahead, sorry. Judy was just saying that she agreed with you, that she read it as well.
Okay, yeah, it's, it's hard to tell for sure, where, my friend's, like, on this , you know, like, you're talking about a lot of things, that, going to seven, bill, and third, bill, so, but, like, it's just more of a fight, where, everybody's just, you know, like, the city, state, city, has exactly, like, contracts, like, and, what you worry about is not what I worry about. I'm not worried about, like, the, like, second, the, the address, by the contract, has been, I'm worried about, about dollars, and, and, so, you're not concerned about things. So, I haven't turned down to my friend yet, and I just want to tell me, you know, and, you may, you may differently, or, things, or, with their contract, or, things differently, and, unfortunately, I'm not able to most see, uh, what my beliefs are, um, I, I told me, that the, is, I'm getting, it's, you know, like, perhaps, you know, we'll get it, and, might have different opinion than I do, like, like, a way to set up the language, uh, so that I, I, I might talk more, please, for example, so, but, if possible, you will get better opinion, and, you know, if, if, like, if you come back to say, no, you should be more contracted, yourself, and, and, they come down, you, so, I know, back on, uh, building spin applications, I know you don't have somebody in place for, for building purposes, I know, like, you have, well, your other options, for building purposes, you, I mean, you all going down, taking, the same, options, like, for us, and you want to get, uh, and it's, we, I don't like the language, if, if you fight any contracts, you know, I'm just, and, um, I'm, I'm, I can't, I can't, I can't, I can't, I can't, I can't, I can't do, you know, I mean, I'm, 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 I'm,
Well, the good explanation.
I, that's amazing, though, it's, it's very hard to play, and, even when I was reading all the, my friends, or my friends, all these, all, like, I'm not sure of the address, because they're all these, that is something I understand, and, so, yeah. I guess, it's, if I could just ask, me, and I can, um, really, if you're, if you're a designer, then I will send email, letting you, when I'm, in, in, um, if you, if you decide, and you decide it anyway, um, because you're going to take this, you don't have insurance coverage, or, actions, being by a building official, um, then, if you still have, be advised of, uh, that, 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 and if you find someone else, then, open, of course, if you find someone else, or, you're, you're on contract, you know, this, 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 when, say, you covered your own actions, that you provided some insurance, that you were providing, or, that, you know, you are actually covered by, that's, 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 um, and, we'll cover our own actions, because, most type of people are, because they're recognized, and they're very aging, and those dangers, like, of, in the building, and, going to help people, while they're, please, recognize that, or, that, they're certified, they're trained, they're, um, you know, like, there's huge, they want your, that, that.
Thanks, Jennifer, for your time. Here, how about that? Okay, that's great, you, you can do.
Stand here, since it's in a full room. Uh, thank you, Mayor, Council, and community members. My name's James Frye, and I am running for Lake County Sheriff, uh, position. I have spent the last twenty-nine years as a Moscow police officer, and the last minute of that, as the chief of police. Um, I decided to, uh, run for sheriff, just because I want to give back to the whole community, but, than just Moscow itself, and, so, pretty good showing, really, for such a small community, shows that, uh, obviously, there's things going on, and you care about what is happening in the community, and, and, if I'm elected, I'd like to be a part of that, and I might work for all the councils, and, uh, spend time, you know, you folks better to serve you the best that we can. Uh, it's good to see a, like, a deputy here tonight, I don't know if it happened during the night, but, uh, it's good to see you here tonight, so, I won't take up any more of your time, but, uh, thank you for the opportunity to introduce myself, and, I will be seeing you a little bit more, I'll be around. Thank you, go there.
Nate?
Yeah.
So, uh, my name is James Wayman, I don't know if you know, but I have two things I want to discuss. First one, uh, was the unfortunate, uh, murder of James Monty, and, just, kind of, what, the lack of the response from the city, or, or just getting out of what had happened, or what had gone on, and I, I understand, uh, last time this year, that people found out late, uh, or didn't know as soon as they're going on, but, how do we get more awareness out if something like that is going on in our community? And I know, Facebook cannot, cannot be the fastest way around, but, just, just, just a learning experience of, of what is we can do, I'm not, not passing any judgment, or anything on those lines, just, just asking, and then, and then, even after, we found out later, and the, the city never addressed any concerns of, hey, here's what's going on, and, we're sorry what happened to one of our citizens, there was, there was really nothing from the city that came out at all, um, in regard to that, particularly, so, that's my question. Huh?
The, the police kept it quiet. The police kept it quiet.
Yeah, the police kept it quiet, but that doesn't muffle the city. There's plenty of chatter on Facebook, other than, of other things that were going on, so, and, even after he was found, and what was going on, like, I know the direct feed from the city isn't straight from the sheriff's office, or, the Laiton County, or, Despers, or anything like that, just, hey, we lost someone from our community, here's, kind of, what was, what we know thus far, I mean, big country news should be the first one to let us know locally, it should be something on our city page, or, if not, at least to catch it, and, so, like I said, it's, when you, you have something you want to say, so... He knew. He knew. So, I guess my question is, so, my question is, is how do we, how can we, as a community, get some of this stuff out there, uh, before, or, like, like, like I'm saying, I'm not, I'm not trying to pass people on, or say, hey, you think should've been said, but, how, how do we do this to protect our own citizens, or, the schools, because the schools aren't even notified until, really, until, my wife and I called the high school and said, hey, we want our children to come home, because we were, we were, we were the ones that reported James missing, and then, figured out that, what was going on, and, granted, yeah, you're right, you're right, when the, when the school didn't know, maybe this is a good question for you, coming in, as a new person, puts you on the spot, and, not that you come in this there now, is, how do we get this stuff out to the small communities, before, because